It's all negotiated and you know what I mean, it makes sense why they do it that way.
Oh yeah.
And it's a sales job. I'm into that.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Platte City Council meeting here on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, beginning at 5:30 PM. Of course, we're in here in the city council chambers. We are calling the meeting officially to order. We have an invocation by Pastor Doug Lee. Pastor Lee, please.
Shall we pray? Our heavenly Father, we're reminded by David that you are our rock and Father, because of that, we stand upon that rock. We believe, Father, that you're the one that can give us all knowledge and all wisdom. And Father, I pray that for our council today and our mayor, as they preside over this meeting, I ask Father that you'll be with their families as they give time to serve our community. Father, we thank you for the peace that we experience in our community and we ask Father for continued peace among our residents. We ask Father today, as we discussed, to help us to remember to keep it civil and to be very courteous of one another. In Jesus' name, amen.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Angie, roll call, please.
Here, 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 here.
Thank you. The current copy of the Open Meetings Act of State Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Meeting procedure, the public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Tonight, we have an award accolade or presentation. It's actually an award for our own John Martin. Where is John? There he is in the back. Okay. I have to read this. You might want to just hang for a second. This will take me a second. Okay. John has been a dedicated enthusiastic volunteer at the train display for the past six years. This is in Cody Park, right, John? Okay. Where he welcomes guests from around the world with genuine warmth and hospitality. A true ambassador for North Platte, he delights in meeting fellow train enthusiasts and eagerly reconnects with repeat visitors, remembering their stories and picking up conversations right where they left off. His passion for railroading in the community shines through in every interaction. In addition to sharing detailed information about trains, John offers engaging stories about local history and encourages visitors to explore other attractions in the area. His deep roots as a third generation railroader and lifelong North Platte resident give him a unique perspective and a wealth of knowledge to share. Whether he's playing train songs on his guitar, imitating a train horn on his harmonica, do you have your harmonica with you? Or simply chatting with guests, John creates an experience that is both entertaining and educational. John also goes above and beyond by opening the display and offering tours during the off season, making sure no visitor misses the opportunity to experience this piece, excuse me, this special piece of North Platte's heritage. He proudly promotes local restaurants, shops, and sites, helping ensure that every guest leaves with a deeper appreciation for the area. His commitment, friendliness, and talent make him an invaluable part of the tourism experience in North Platte. John takes great pride in what he calls this diamond of our community and through his efforts, he helps make the train, uh, make the train display a treasured and unforgettable stop for all who visit. This was the nomination message at a recent tourism banquet where John won the excellence in service at an attraction award. So, John, I get the honor of presenting you the award again. Let's give him a good clap.
This really is second to all the people I meet from all around the world. And if you haven't been there on a weekend, just, or the day of the week, just come visit us because you'll meet someone from New Zealand or Russia. You name it, anywhere in the world, and they are, they are really blown away by North Platte. I really try to promote North Platte. I think it's a fuel. It's, uh, we really, we really have it going. And our city is, the downtown, everything is, looks nice, all the attractions that are in North Platte. It just really is great. So, come visit us.
Thanks, John. I think we found the star of our next commercial.
That man a job.
All right. Consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Number one, A, approve the minutes of May 20, 2025. B, adopt the resolution consenting to sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on June 20, 21, 27, and 28, 2025, from 10 AM to 5 PM in the 300 block of Bailey Street from 4th to 5th Streets for the Cowboy Collective event during Nebraska Land Days. C, approve the application by Bar 304, DBA Venue 304, for special designated licenses on June 20, 21, 27, and 28, 2025, from 10 AM to 5 PM in the 300 block of Bailey Street from 4th, excuse me, from 4th to 5th Streets for the Cowboy Collective event during Nebraska Land Days. D, authorize Chief Thompson to make application for safer funds through the assistance of Firefighters Grant, AFG, funding the commit, funding and commit to the required matching funds if application was successful. E, adopt the recommendation of the City Planning Commission for preliminary and final approval of Swanson Second Re-Platte.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by, was that you, Brian Flanders? Okay. Second by Flanders, calling the question on approving the agenda. Okay. Thank you. We're not sure why we have a big red X on the background, everyone, but it doesn't affect the voting. So, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the regular agenda. Authorize and approve, excuse me, number two, authorize and approve the request to purchase a 2013 Ford F-350 used pickup from Dylan's Auto in Lincoln, Nebraska, in the amount of $37,362.00 and authorize the mayor to sign all documents for the city.
I move to authorize and approve the request to purchase the 2013 Ford F-350 used pickup from Dylan's Auto in Lincoln, Nebraska, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents for the city.
Motion by Garrick, second by Rieker. Discussion on item number two. Nick? Did we get, did we look at other places to get a truck similar to this?
We put out local bids and got two bids back. One of them, after they submitted their bid, pulled the bid because they'd sold the vehicle. And then the same thing happened with the second one. So then this was the closest thing we could find to those bids.
Kind of the downfall of a bidding process is they sell before you get a chance to get them.
Where public service normally uses, goes for used vehicles to save money. It's a little different than buying a new vehicle because used vehicles don't usually stay around very long if they're good.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Brian?
Is this replacing something or is it just?
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number two, please. It just occurs to me, we failed to do a voting test. Is everything working? Did they? Okay. Item number two is passed. Item number three, approve the renewal of the interlocal fuel agreement between Lincoln County and the City of North Platte for services of providing fuel to Lincoln County Roads Department. Authorize the mayor to sign all documents for the city.
I move to approve the renewal of the interlocal fuel agreement between Lincoln County and the City of North Platte for services of providing fuel to the, to the Lincoln County Roads Department and authorize the mayor to sign all documents for the city.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Rieker. Discussion on item number three.
Hi, Mayor. Real quick, Lane, the $650,000 cap in the contract with the county, I'm working on the assumption that that's, there's a lot of cushion in that. Is that accurate or what kind of dollars usually low in that?
It's usually fairly close. The county and us work together each year to kind of look at fuel prices and what their usage is and they have a budget amount that's what we use for this amount. It can fluctuate, uh, maybe some years they only spend $550,000. It depends on what fuel price is doing everything, but it's pretty close.
So if they hit that cap, then this agreement would need modified before they continue to purchase fuel. In other words, they don't get it for free, right?
Right. They don't get it for free. We have had that happen, so I couldn't tell you what would happen if that would come close, but.
We'd be modifying the agreement.
Friends with the county. Don't take that wrong. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number three, please. Item number three is passed. Item number four, approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Donald Dietrichs for property located at 504 through 506 North Bryan Avenue and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
I move to approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Donald Dietrichs and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by McNew. Discussion on item number five. Brad?
So with this one and the next item on our agenda, how many is that total where we're at?
Um, I think this puts us at six?
Seven.
Oh, seven. Okay.
Are any of? Gotcha. So seven pending, including this agenda.
Okay.
Are any of those, is the city planning to do anything other than just tear down the, the buildings?
That would probably be more of a question for the building department because, um, they're the ones that have kind of gone in and inspected. A lot of them are, are being demolished, uh, because they're so far gone.
Right.
So, um, I, I don't know and I can't say for sure with these two, um, this item and the next item, because I don't know that anybody's really been inside of them. I know that they're, they're both written up for code violations. Um, but we haven't really been inside to see what the structural integrity of them is. This particular item on Bryan, I know is, uh, pretty much chock full of stuff. Personal property, um, more likely trash, but, um, so it's, it's hard to say for sure what the plan is until we would get in and see. But, um, the purchase price, like most of them, just reflects the, the assessed value of the lot.
Gotcha.
How long has this one been on the list?
Um, this one has been on our property resolution list just for about a year. Um, so it's not as long as some of the other ones.
All right, Brad, go ahead.
If, if there's a different plan other than tear it down, I'd like to know about that if we could, please. Thank you.
Brad?
About what's the average cost to tear them down?
Um, for any, for any of the ones that we've purchased, we've been putting all of those out to bid. Um, and so we've been getting asbestos inspections done, all that type of stuff. So it kind of, it's hard to say across the board because it depends on whether the asbestos inspection comes back with anything. Obviously, that, that increases the cost for demolition. Um, but, uh, oh, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. They've been kind of all over the board and it kind of depends. Maybe 10 to 20, um, but it depends. It would depend, it depends a little bit on the availability of the contractors that are bidding it out too, so.
I think the last one we just did was 14,000. So anywhere, I mean, he's, he's close. It can vary anywhere from seven to 25,000.
Then I think to go along with what Brad's asking, at some point, these empty cleared lots will be put up for sale.
Right.
For people to be able to build on.
Yeah. But if they're just being tore down, I, I understand that's part of the process. Nobody else is probably going to want them. But I want to be aware if we start renovating and doing that, that, that gets a little more into the gray zone. So if we're just tearing them down, I'm not worried about it as, as much, you know?
So do we sell them as we tear them down or when?
The plan has been to get, now, with these approved, now, once they close, we'll be at seven. Thank you. So we'll be, uh, holding some sort of an auction, whether it be a bid or an actual auction, but we'll be getting that done here in the summer.
Okay.
The idea was to sort of do several at the same time, so we get some economy of scale in selling them. But of course, we have to tear them, we have to clear them first, so it may be later this summer. So.
Mr. Mayor, um, I thought initially we were talking about using cities' resources to demolish these structures and haul them off with cities' equipment. Because we could do it so much cheaper, as I recall.
We do have grant funds that are available and this is a, uh, an approved cost of the grant to be able to bid them out. And so rather than to, and maybe Lane can speak more to that, rather than take up some of the, the city's time, um, and manpower.
If resources were available right now, we're so busy on our other projects and streets and parks that now if there'd be a lull, it might make some sense, but right now we're planning on contracting that out, using the grant funds for that.
Another question, Mr. Mayor. Should it happen that somebody found an interest in one of these properties after the city purchased it? Is there an opportunity to resell the property to another owner?
Once it's been cleared, yeah.
Not before.
We'd have to look at the grant and find out.
Well, um, potentially, but I think we still would want to look at doing that on a, um, on an even playing field to make sure that nobody's getting any special treatment from the city. And so that's why we've looked at procedures for how we will sell these. Uh, but the other main, uh, I, I guess, point of contention with this grant is that the, the purpose of it is to, uh, create, um, usable housing. Um, and so obviously the ones that we've been going after here, some of the worst that are on our list. And so that's why they've been demolished is because, like I said, they're, they're generally so far gone that, uh, there hasn't been any way from the building department's perspective that they'll, that they would be salvageable or, or, um, be able to be renovated.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or question on item number four? Seeing none, calling the question on item number four. Item number four is passed. Item number five, approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Brad Nixon for property located at 1208 West 11th Street and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
I move to approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Brad Nixon and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by McNew. Discussion on item number five. Seeing none, calling the question on item number five, please. Item number five is passed. Item number six. Consider request by Jerome Viera to create agreement for city maintenance of Viera Street.
I move to authorize the city attorney to prepare an agreement with Jerome Viera for the city to maintain Viera Street.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by, was that you, Pete?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everyone. Uh, hold on just a second, Mr. Viera. We'll get there. If you recall, I think it was not the most recent meeting, but the meeting prior to that, Mr. Viera presented a, um, agenda item request in which we would discuss, uh, creating a scenario for his, uh, for the street that leads up to his house. There's a lot of history here, so I'm going to ask Mr. Viera to fill us in on the history. And then I'm going to ask the city attorneys who have been working on this to, to chime in on what he's found as well. So, Mr. Viera, would you approach the mic, please, and, um, give us about five minutes on the history here?
Right. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Um, my name is Jerome Viera. I live at 2403 Viera Drive. I've resided there since I was, uh, four years old, except for a brief, uh, little stint of 25 years in the military and came back. Okay? Uh, how this started is if you see this plane here, where Viera Street is now, originally before the city, we were the, pretty much the only house out there at this time, right? They said, okay, that's Madison. Well, then as the city grew out that way, they figured out, no, that ain't Madison. Madison is this street right here. So they came to us, I happened to be in the military at the time, and they said, we're going to have to change this street because Madison's going to move over. We can make you this street, city can put this street in, but you have to give up the easement on both sides. Give the easement up. My mother called me in the military. I said, fine. She called me a week or two later. They says, uh, they want to know what you want to name the street. I says, well, if we got to give up the land, we'll name it Viera Avenue. And they named it Viera Avenue. They came up, they put a street sign up that said Viera Avenue. They went down about 50 yards and they put a sign up that said Dead End. Been Viera Avenue ever since then. They've graded this road since I lived there in the 60s, has been graded. Before it was ever Viera Road. Okay? Well, it's been graded and graded forever. And then here about a year ago, it wasn't getting graded and that's when I stopped in at the street superintendent and he told me that he was not going to waste taxpayers' money for one individual at the end of the road. I came and I talked to Lane about it and stuff. They said, we'll get back with you. I waited two or three months, nothing. I went back to the uh, street superintendent. At that time, he told me it's a private road. I said, no, it's not a private road. He said, yes, it is. Because there's a sign there says no dead end and stuff. I said, the city put that in. My mother was 80 years old. She didn't put the sign in. And we didn't put Viera Street up there. I said, okay. I walked out of his office. He, uh, had a pretty derogatory remark that I came back and let you knew. He was sitting there and as I walked out of his office, he said that street and to his partners in there will never get fricking graded as long as I sit here. I walked out of his office and I came and told Lane that conversation. Well, then it went on and on. Finally, I got the letter that, uh, couldn't find the paperwork where the land was deeded. And you hired, uh, Mr. Chuzinski here, am I saying that right, Chuzinski? You know, to look it up. I physically saw that paperwork that it, the land was deeded and wherein it was signed. And it said, said street will be designated as Viera Avenue. Now, it's what I asked is that, and then I got a letter again from, uh, the law office stating that if I wanted the road maintained, I could annex into city limits. Okay? No. But just a little bit of history on the taxes down there. I spent 25 years in the military. Nebraska was one of the few states that you still had to pay Nebraska state tax and federal tax and everything overseas and everything. I paid taxes on that property, the only man down at the end of that road for 25 years and wasn't here. Okay? Not to be told that I ain't worth having my road graded. Because I'm the only man at the end of the road. Well, I'll tell you what. I spent a lot of days at the end of a lonely road overseas, paying taxes at the end of that road. Defended America, Nebraska, North Platte, and Viera Avenue. Okay? And I don't appreciate them remarks. My thing was to you, you give me 30 days to find this paperwork somewhere. Since my mom passed, I don't know, but I'll tear that whole courthouse apart till I find it. But in the meantime, I want my road fixed and I will pay a contractor to come do it. And if I find the paperwork, the city reimburses me for my costs. And if I don't find it, I'll continue to maintain my road. Thank you.
Okay.
So Billy, you wanna quickly go over the items that are in the materials?
Yes. Um, so the materials reflect the two letters that I've sent to Mr. Viera. As the first letter indicates, uh, I did go down to the Register of Deeds office, uh, I had the Register of Deed staff, uh, looking over my shoulder as I was, uh, looking for any kind of records. Of course, the first thing that the staff pointed out to me is, well, you know, this property is in the county, um, which is reflected in the, um, kind of the second map that you'll see here, the, the dark line that goes around, uh, there is the city limits. Um, so Mr. Viera's property is not within the city limits. Um, and so what I, uh, had asked of him, and I haven't received anything in response, was, you know, if he could show us something that, um, that would prove to us that his, his road had been, um, and somehow, uh, you know, dedicated to the city, then, you know, we would certainly entertain his requests and we would reconsider our position. But short of that, without being able to find anything on record and, uh, due to the fact that his property is located, located outside of the city, um, I, I couldn't, uh, I couldn't issue an opinion that the city would be under any obligation to maintain his road. And so I, not having anything to, to base his position on, that's my position, is that the city, uh, short of the council wanting to do something, uh, to that effect here today, um, the city's under no obligation to maintain that road. I don't know what, uh, what may have occurred in the past, but it was nothing that was done in a manner that would, uh, obligate the city at this time to maintain the road, because there's nothing on file, there's nothing to show, it's been dedicated to the city. Um, so I, I have to advise the council that it's my position, in my opinion, that, um, that the city should not agree to maintain private roads like this, um, outside of the city limits.
So that's the, some of the documents that are in the materials, so go ahead, Ed.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Mayor, do we have any record of that Viera Avenue ever having been designated as Madison?
That's, that's the real, that's the conundrum that we're in here, is that nothing at the courthouse indicates that it was ever part of the city. Now, I, the history may be different, but nothing at the courthouse today indicates that it was part of the city.
Even within the city's archives, we don't have anything that shows that, as being designated Madison.
We've been, I, we've been able, unable to find anything, go ahead, Lane. Okay, unfortunately, what we're, we're a little afraid of what may have happened here, is that Mr. Viera may have a piece of paper, but it never got filed at the courthouse, we're very concerned that that's what has happened here.
We, we, so, go ahead, go ahead, come up to the mic. And we did look through all of the city's records.
Signed stamped, it was like three things on it, you know? I remember, I remember it vividly, I read it my, when I came home, I saw it.
Yeah, the, like I said, the tough part is, I'm not doubting it, is it, it's not been filed at the courthouse, that's the tough part.
I just have one other thing I wanna say too, about the kid at the end of the road. When we had that flood in two thousand eleven, anybody here remember that? You know what the city asked me? Hey, we're gonna flood the city, can we put a berm down the middle of your alfalfa field, so the city don't flood? I says, I got flood insurance, go ahead and do it. Put a berm right down the middle of my alfalfa field, so the city wouldn't get flooded. I've never been, had any tax cut on losing all that ground. Cities put snow fence for your emergency snow route, I let them put in my alfalfa field and wait for them to take down for the last twenty-five years, and I wait and we work it out, that's a taxpayer on the end of the road, thank you.
Thank you.
So are, are, as a council, as a, as a city, are we able to work out some kind of a, an annual contract with Mr. Viera that we would maintain the road for an annual fee? If he's gonna hire somebody to do it, and we've got a road grader going right by there, it may make, make some sense to put together an agreement with Mr. Viera that for X number of dollars annually, we will agree to grade your road three times, five times, ten times, whatever it is. Is that something that's a reasonable, uh, resolution to this?
I don't think there's anything from a legal perspective that would prohibit us from doing that, is there? I mean, we can make that arrangement, that.
I, to be honest, I haven't looked into, I, I would have to spend some time looking into that. I, I would have concerns with starting to get into that, that kind of business. I mean, I think, uh, the city has plenty of work in, in Lane or anybody from the street department can speak more to that. I mean, we wanna make sure that we're taking care of our city streets first, so to take on, uh, maintenance of private roads, uh, in addition to that, I don't know that it's a, it's a wise commitment to make. Um, but other than that, I, I haven't looked into the legality of it.
So Mr. Viera's house, um, is his address such and such on Viera Avenue?
Twenty-four oh three.
Twenty-four oh three.
Is that the only place there's a Viera Avenue in the city?
Yes.
So somewhere that had to be designated as Viera Avenue, I would think, to establish an address for that residence. I mean, is that logical?
It, it very well could be, but again, it was never filed in the courthouse.
I understand.
Or at least, if it was, it's missing. I don't think the courthouse misses things like that very often, so. Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
How many, how many other types of agreements do we have out there of roads that are outside of the city limits that we have easements or that we're maintaining roads? So in other words, if this agreement occurred and was recorded, and we're functioning, maintaining that today, how many of those, is this a common arrangement or a very uncommon arrangement? We have zero, do we have fifty?
I don't know of any other non-designated county or city roads or streets that we have. We take care of some county roads and they take care of some city streets on our, in our locals, but those are all deeded and platted roads or streets, I don't have anything, and that's, that's the, as we said, the quandary here, because it doesn't show that this was ever platted or dedicated as a s- street or a road. Because that would be something, if it was dedicated as a road, it would be actually a county, and that would be something where we would maybe look at it in our local or something like that.
But the issue, that this is a pri, the county sees this then, or would see this as a private drive, not a road, right? So maybe, so we're not maintaining other private drives for any other reasons?
Nothing I'm aware of, no.
Go ahead, Mr. Viera. Come up to the microphone. Mr. Viera, would you come up to the microphone, please? The folks at home can't hear you, so.
If it was deeded, because I remember when they deeded the road, it went all the way to a little past our house is where it goes. So I guess my question was, if it is, and I do find that paperwork, that it is a deeded road, then it can be maintained, correct? If we have another road outside a city limit, somewhere in North Platte that's being maintained, wouldn't my road fall under one of them categories? If, or we, or we do zero maintenance outside city limits with city equipment?
We, well, if your road has a deed to it, then we need to see what's on the deed.
Okay.
That's the law.
But my other question is, are there any roads outside the perimeter of North Platte city limits that North Platte city equipment or employees maintain or work on?
As I just stated, we have an agreement with the county where they take care of some of our streets, and we take care of some of their roads, depending on where they fall, where it makes sense, where you have a skip or something, and so, yes.
Now, on the agreement you're saying, maybe we make an agreement with me where I would pay so much to have the road maintained? Would I be able to collect past rent for twenty years for the snow fence? And would, uh, would, uh, the berm going through the middle of my alfalfa field be the four acres probably be removed from my tax credit, my taxes?
Well, I think we would seek to make a fair deal with you, but in that spirit, we could also charge you for maintaining the road. So why don't we find the document? You find the document, you bring it back to us, we'll get in front of the council again, we'll have a conversation about it. Is that acceptable to you?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Alrighty, fine, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move to table this item until the document is produced by Mr. Viera.
Tabled by, motion to table by Lucas, second by Vols, calling the question on tabling this item until the document is found by Mr. Viera or someone else. This item is tabled, okay? Item number seven. Third reading in action to adopt ordinance number four-two-zero-nine to rezone certain land from a B-two highway commercial district to an R-three dwelling district located at three-zero-zero-one West Ninth Street. Lane, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty-two oh nine. An ordinance of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Rezoning certain lands described as lots five and six, Vinsles replat. North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, from a B-two highway commercial district to an R-three dwelling district. Repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date of publication thereof.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four-two-zero-nine to rezone, rezone certain land from a B-two highway commercial district to an R-three dwelling district located at three-zero-zero-one West Ninth Street on final reading.
Second. Motion by Rieker, second by Di. Any discussion on item number seven? Seeing none, calling the question on item number seven, please. Item number seven is passed. Item number eight, third reading in action to adopt ordinance number four-two-one-zero to rezone certain land from an R-three dwelling, dwelling district to an I-one light industrial district to an RM mobile home district, mobile home park district, can't read tonight, and an I-one light industrial district located at two-four-zero-one East Philip Avenue. Lane?
Ordinance number forty-two-ten. An ordinance of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Rezoning certain lands described as attractive land in the south half, northwest quarter, section two, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the six P M. North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, from an R-three dwelling district and an I-one light industrial district to an RM mobile home park district and an I-one light industrial district. Repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date of publication thereof.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four-two-one-zero to rezone certain land from an R-three dwelling district and an I-one light industrial district to an RM mobile home park district and an I-one light industrial district located at twenty-four-zero-one East Philip Avenue on final reading.
Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Vols. Discussion on item number eight. See, oh, sorry, Brad, go ahead.
So the, this request is, the idea of this request is to get a nicer, you know, mobile home park in our area. Um, there's a, there's a gap in our housing that, that needs a little higher end, um, lower, higher end, however you wanna say that, mobile home. Um, the plat states right now that there can't be anything older than twenty-twenty-five. The issue with that is, um, obviously, in forty years, that's no longer nicer, newer mobile home. So I had a discussion with Judy, and I, I was gonna make a motion, but, uh, I think we're gonna change that plat to, uh, a five-year uh, from current date, so nothing older than five years on the current date, which fits in with the, with, with the, the current owners is planning on doing, so. I think, I think that's a little bit better, I don't think it needs to be handled at, at here, but I wanted to discuss that a little bit, and so.
Go ahead, be.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Five year at the time of placement?
Yes.
Okay.
From, five years from the current year.
Okay, so let's say we're in the year twenty-thirty-five.
Correct.
And someone's living in a twenty-twenty-five mobile home?
No, that'd be fine, it's, yeah, at the time of placement.
That makes sense.
Yep, thank you. So Brad, is your suggestion that we go back into our, our zoning rules and code, or is your suggestion that that gets approached in the, in a redevelopment agreement if they choose to apply for TIF? Here's my concern, so it's, once you rezone something, it is what it is, and then they could sell it tomorrow with, with the new zone in place. If we don't protect ourselves based on the new plans, moving forward, we could get somebody from anywhere doing whatever they want with the new zone. The plat allows us to protect ourselves moving forward to having a nicer, uh, newer mobile home park, essentially. Mr. Mayor? May I motion that we go into a very quick executive, um, session, discuss a legal matter related to that? Second.
Motion for executive session by Lucas, second by Garrick, calling the question on executive session. Council is now in executive session, everyone, we will try to make it as quick as possible.
I gotta make a ballgame I wanna, I wanna get.
Item number nine is passed. Item number 10. Start with the public hearing. And we'll open the public here in a moment, a public hearing in a moment where we will hear testimony. If anyone chooses to stand up to consider action on application by Central Nebraska Public Power and Irrigation District for a conditional use permit to allow dredging operations and commercial sand processing on property located southeast of the city of North Platte in an F1 floodway district. Okay, I'm opening the public hearing officially. Anyone would like to comment on this, feel free to come to the microphone, tell us who you are, where you live, and we'll be happy to hear your comment.
My name is Jim Brown. I am with the Central Nebraska Public Power Irrigation District. I live in Holdridge. Okay. I'm going to assume that you're all familiar with our operations at the diversion dam. We've been dredging material for 70 plus years. And we are running out of room to place that material. We've made it a practice to give that material away. It's taken a lot of money to do that. And we've also purchased land in the past 10 years or so. Effectively taking it off the tax roll. Which personally, I don't like, but as a taxpayer and a Nebraskan. So anyway, I was approached by a company, a commercial company in September of 2024, asking if they could look at our material, our sand material. They felt like they had some markets that they could serve. And they went through collecting materials, came back to us, said they'd like to enter into an agreement if they could acquire this sand. They believe they can ship it off to multiple states for different products. They haven't really given me an idea of what those products are. But the central board approved entering into an agreement for 30 years for this company, Grit LLC, to remove process and remove sand from our yard. Some positives about this, this is going to bring in additional employment for the county. It's going to, they're going to use the inland port authority site. They'll be the first customer for that, then giving the port authority a boost and hopefully opening up other opportunities for people and businesses to, to use that site. Anyway, I, I hope that you'll see that this is a good thing. And if you have any questions for me?
We'll, we'll call you back if we have questions. So thank you very much. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Gary Pearson, President, North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation, 502 South Dewey. I would just echo Mr. Brown's comments. We've had the opportunity to work with he and his client to develop a relationship with the industrial rail park. In fact, it would be very difficult for him to market it outside of a local market without the access to a rail park and to have our first customer there. Will activate the former Greenbrier spur on a temporary basis. And as we continue moving forward on a drop and pull and permanent transload area, which then they will really ramp up their operation, have a lot more load. So we're really encouraged by the long-term potential of this. Client's been great to work with, as has Central and North Platte Chamber Development go on record in support of this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment on this item?
Close the public hearing.
Second, second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Recker to close the public hearing. Mr. Die, would you vote please?
Oh, sorry.
If you'd like to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Or not.
I'm studying the map.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you, everyone. Counsel will now consider action on an application by Central Nebraska Public Power and Irrigation District for a conditional use permit to allow dredging operations and commercial sand processing on property located southeast of the city of North Platte in an F1 floodway district. Mr. Brown, would you come back up to the mic? I will have a question for you. Anyone have a motion?
I make a motion that we...
Your motion on this one is actually kind of long. We have to have specific things within it.
All right. Oh, here it is. Okay, I can do. I move that we find a request for a conditional use permit to allow dredging operation, commercial sand processing on property located southeast of the city of North Platte meets a minimum standard stated in the North Platte Code of Ordinances, Section 156.322, and approve and grant conditional use permit requested with the conditions that all elements of the application are complied with, are complied with.
There's a part there that has some factual findings that you, you should add.
Based on the following factual findings. Thank you, Bill. The use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations of any governmental jurisdiction. The use shall have adequate water, sewer, and drainage facilities. Number three, ingress and egress shall be so designated as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Number four, the use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located. Number five, the use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land.
Motion by Recker, second by Garrick. Okay. My question, sir, you might as well just hang out because they'll be up there, as I'm sure. So Central dredges the sand out of the river, at the edge of the river, that sort of thing. That's the process. And you pile up the sand.
Correct.
What you're really selling is the pile of sand. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That was my question. I just want to make sure we weren't having another dredging operation and we're just selling the existing pile of sand. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, counsel, other questions or comments? Brad?
So you stated that you, you previously just been giving away the materials. Are you still going to be giving away the materials or do they have the rights to all of...
They have the rights to all of the material. We have other sites along our canal where we are using a drag line to remove materials. It's more fine material. We can't, if we're approached, somebody needs some of that material. I think we can come up with some agreement, you know, for them to get that.
Awesome.
We have plenty of it.
Other question? Ty?
Just real quickly, I didn't realize maybe that you guys were dredging that much sand to that operation. Why, why are you guys the one that dredged that? Or how does that, how did you become the one? Just a quick lesson on your role with that, I would enjoy to know.
Yeah, so the diversion dam is across the Platte River, just downstream of the confluence of the North and South Platts. Any large flows or they're going to carry material downstream? There is a forbay designed into that diversion dam to, to slow the water down so that material will drop out of the, the current before it's, before the water goes into the supply canal. Right? If we weren't to dredge, then that supply canal gets clogged. Right? So the operations is to support, the operation of dredging directly supports the, the operations of running water down the supply canal, keeping it clean, minimizing costs. It's much more efficient to dredge at one location than to dip out at every corner that we have. We have, by my estimates, been dredging out 150,000 cubic yards per year. That is on average. And... Yeah, what, what, what other information do you want?
Yeah, no, that answered my question. Thank you.
Go ahead.
How does that equate to number of trucks? And what is your ingress, egress to get out to the inland port?
Right. So Grit LLC is estimating 20, up to 20 trucks per day round trip from the diversion dam to the Greenbrier site. We have taken it upon ourselves to purchase some asphalt millings and fines and lay it on the, the road on the west side of the supply canal so that it does a number of things. One, it reduces dust. Right? Second, it's going to make that road an all-weather road, not susceptible to rutting, you know, getting stuck. In the past, it's, it's been pretty hairy, especially when we are, we or, you know, our partners, let's say, that are getting sand from us, when they've been going in and out at, at a comparable rate, that road gets torn up pretty bad. So yeah, we've, we've invested a significant sum to, to bring that road up to a better condition.
So on that point, you have the easement on that road. You purely maintain, you own the road. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it true that there are a large number of golf balls in that sand pile?
Depends on what do you consider a large number?
Have been in the past. Okay.
Last time I was there, I picked up five.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is just another tying on to Ty's question. You, you have water that goes into the canal system. Obviously, obviously, there's other water that goes on down the river. Why can't you just put the sand in the water that goes on down the river?
That's... The US Army Corps of Engineers.
I figured it was something.
Regulates the, the placement of fill in a water of the United States. That dredging activity to put that material right over the, the diversion dam would require the section 404 permit of the Clean Water Act. We do have a, a permit. I worked for five years to get a, an individual permit from the Corps, giving us the authority to dredge material directly over the diversion dam. But there are a number of stipulations. Flow rates have to be high enough and we can't grade at the max. We're using the Maxwell Bridge to, to do our measurements. Indiana R has a gauge station there and, and then, anyway, a lot of stipulations. There's on average, or I'm sorry, median, 40 some days, 42 days of flows that would allow us to pump over the dam. So 42 at 1,000 yards a day doesn't meet our needs. So...
If you were to estimate 20 trucks a day, how many years can you haul off of that pile?
I don't think we'll ever get rid of that pile.
Oh. Okay. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to take advantage of some of our natural resources that are causing a problem.
I appreciate that.
Other question? Nick?
Just one question, just for educational purposes for myself. Can somebody, maybe Judy or somebody, explain the conditional use permit, why this is necessary, and what restrictions come into play with a conditional use permit?
Judy? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mayor, council. So that goes back to the zoning regulations. So this is located in an F1 zoning district. In that zoning district, it has a list of permitted uses and a list of conditional uses. Those were set by council a number of years ago. I didn't create it, so I'm not sure how long ago that it's been in place. But a dredging operation, sand and gravel operation, is an allowed use, but only by conditional use. Conditional use, what that does, it's different than zoning and some of the other regulations. But what a conditional use does is allows the council to put certain conditions on granting that permit. So you could do something, you know, if there was an issue with a conditional use permit, you could require them to put up a fence somewhere or something like that. You can put reasonable conditions on the condition. But it all goes back to the way the zoning regulations read, and this requires in this particular district, these types of operations to go through a conditional use process.
Okay. Ed?
Mr. Mayor, so Judy, you don't know when these zoning regulations were put in, and I forget what this gentleman said when they started dredging out there. But it would seem to me that this dredging operation has preceded any regulations that would have regulated it.
Yes.
And so in that situation, I'm, I'm not understanding, I guess, why we have to have any changes in zoning.
We don't have a change in zone. I believe this dredging operation started in like 1946 or something like that. The city of North Platte didn't put in zoning regulations until 1964, I believe, is when we started with zoning regulations. I don't know if this area was F1 district at that time. I, I would have to go back and pull a zoning map to see. But anyway, so what happens with this, the reason that they were allowed to stay is because they were allowed by right to begin with. As the zoning changes, it becomes illegal, non-conforming use. So they are legally there because they've always been there.
Right.
The thing that changes it is they are now using it as a commercial operation where they're selling the product. If they were still just giving it away, we probably would not require them to go through this process. But where they're using it as a commercial operation, it falls into that category.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to point out that I believe it was in 2022 that the city annexed that property. Prior to that, it was, it was county. So we would have been with the county prior to 2022. So is that fair to say, Judy?
Really, you're pretty clear.
This property is actually in the city's two-mile jurisdiction, so they're not annexed into the city, so they're not in city limits. But yes, we did take over the two-mile jurisdiction. But the county does have regulations too, and the county would also be going through a very similar permitting process for this particular type of regulation.
Brad?
So when we do any kind of new zoning outside of city limits, we always annex it in. Is that not true with conditional use permits?
Not always. When you do zoning, so right now, most of your properties that are outside the city limits, a lot of them that are outside the city limits are in the two-mile, are an ag district. So just by rezoning it, that doesn't require them to come into the city limits. There's a lot of regulations when you start annexing property. It has to be abutting and adjacent to, it's got to be urban in character. So there's a lot of differences there. When we annex a property, we can extend our two-mile ETJ. And your two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction falls under the same zoning requirements as if you were in the city. And that's to allow us to continue to expand. And, you know, you don't want buildings that aren't inspected in the two-mile because there's a potential that eventually it would be brought into the city limits.
And this land is...
So that's kind of the whole idea behind it.
This land isn't currently abutting city limits, I assume.
No, not close enough to be annexed, huh?
Fair enough.
I think what you might be thinking of is usually if something is right immediately next to the city and then they want city services, sewer water, then that's when we usually say, okay, we're going to annex. Yeah. Other comments and questions? Okay, calling the question on item number 10, please. Item number 10 is passed. Item number 11 begins with another public hearing. This public hearing will consider action on an application by C&amp;T Coachera LLC owner and Jason and Kayla Jensen purchaser for an amendment to the city of North Platte future land use map, amending certain land from residential low-density single-family to public quasi-public on property located at 801 through 807 South Elm Street. Okay, I'm opening the public hearing. I'm going to ask one or more of the Jensen family to come up and tell us a little bit about what they'd like to do. Who can decide whether one or both of you? Okay. My only request is that whoever's speaking, please make sure you speak into the microphone so the folks at home can hear you. Thank you. And tell us who you are, even though we already know.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We are Jason and Kayla Jensen, 1120 Tanner Corp. We are the owners of Enzo Athletic Performance, a family-oriented, small business built on Christian values, committed to the health and well-being of our community. We're here to request the rezoning of 801 to 807 South Elm. Our goal is to build a state-of-the-art space focused on wellness, youth development, and family fitness. We've been a growing a part of this community for the past 11 years since starting our business in 2014 with only 1,500 square feet and 35 members. After two years, we bought and renovated our current space, a building that sat empty and was considered an eyesore for more than five years. Today, we serve over 240 members ranging from six to 70 years old. We offer unique services not found anywhere else in the community, including athletic development programs for first through 12th grade athletes, small group training and accountability programs that are guided by a coach, and soon onsite child services. We're asking to rezone these lots to allow us to build the new space that meets a growing need, combating rising chronic disease, and helping families make health a priority. This new space will occupy all four lots that we are purchasing, including parking and ample green space. It'll be 6,000 to 7,000 square feet in size, which will provide us room to run simultaneous classes for kids and adults, allowing entire families to work out and train at the same time. We'll offer expanded child services and enhance the long-term wellness of North Platte. These lots have sat vacant for years, priced in a range that makes them unattractive for standard residential development. We paid close to the asking price because we see the long-term community value this location can offer. The current taxes on the vacant land are approximately 2,000 a year, and we're anticipating an annual tax liability of approximately 25,000 for the new build. Our peak hours are 5:30 to 7:00 AM, 9:00 to 10:00 AM, and 4:30 to 7:30 PM, in which, based on our current car count, we average 15 cars in the lot at one time. We will have more than enough onsite parking, exceeding requirements for the relatively small influx of cars that will be onsite at one time, and we do not operate 24/7. Our class-based system spreads traffic naturally throughout the day. We're committed to making our space architecturally consistent with the healthcare buildings and the residential homes, a natural extension of the existing medical corridor, and a visual buffer between the commercial activity and the neighborhood homes. We're also going to intentionally design the building layout, lighting, and landscaping to ensure a seamless fit for the entire area. We understand that rezoning these lots and the construction of our building will bring concerns, and we're trying to be empathetic and also proactive. We'll address these concerns and assure you we have thoughtful plans in place to mitigate them. The first considerations we have made include traffic, parking, and lighting. We expect a modest increase in traffic during class windows, but not continuous or disruptive. And we expect most of the traffic to come from Philip Street. We will exceed the city's parking requirements and use shielded lighting to protect light from light pollution. Our layout will avoid any impact on neighboring driveways or yards. We also acknowledge that you may be concerned about the change in the character of the neighborhood. We plan to preserve the character by designing the building to blend in, not stand out. This is not a commercial strip mall. It's a purpose-built wellness space that will enhance our community health and the value of the area. Approving this rezoning enables us to have a positive impact on our community. We can hire more trainers and coaches and support staff, offer more structured youth programs that are not found anywhere else, create a space where families can train together, and encourage a culture of wellness in our town. Now, you might ask us why this location. Many of our members come for a one-hour training session three, four, or five times a week. They have one hour before they have to get to work or on their lunch break, or as soon as they get off work, they're rushing to get to class. We need to be centrally located so they can leave the bank, the hospital, the schools, come over, get their training session in, because you know how jam-packed their schedules are, and then get back to work, finish their day, take care of their families, and do what they have to do. If we were on the outskirts of town, which we have definitely pursued a lot of other options, it would be really hard for our clients to do what they need to do and to attend our training sessions. Um, you want to do that?
Sure. We respectfully ask for your support in rezoning these lots so that we can move forward with a space that serves the people of North Platte across generations, fits within permitted uses of H1, and elevates the value and vibrancy of our growing community. We'd also like to note that some members of, of the community have signed a petition against the rezoning of this property. As I'm sure you've noticed, not all of these properties are within the 300-foot radius that has been asked of the city. And only 11 of, 11 of them are within that radius, which is a mere 28% of the properties within that range. Some of the ones that are on there may be renters, but if, even if you add those, we're still less than 50%. The petition stated that rezoning would in fact lower property values, which is an assumption that Jeff Bain, when we presented in front of the planning commission, disproved saying that this one property would not affect the value of the surrounding homes. It also stated that the rezoning contradicts the covenants of the land. However, those covenants were waived in 1989, making that point irrelevant. The information that was given to those signed, the, those who signed the petition was misleading and ill-informed. Thank you.
You guys have any questions for us while we're up here?
We reserve the right to call you back when we consider the matter. This is the public hearing phase, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing is open. Anyone would like to make a comment? Please approach the mic, tell us who you are and what your thoughts are. Go ahead and come up to the mic's phone, sir.
My name's Dylan Levatt, and I live at 611 South York Avenue. I want to take a moment to address some of the concerns the residents may have about Enzo and the people bringing it into our community. I am 22 years old and I'm proud to be an Eagle Scout. Two of the values I strive to live by are trustworthiness and reverence. With that in mind, I would never stand or speak in support of an organization or business that didn't align with my core values. I'm here today because I truly believe in what Enzo represents. Enzo has been and continues to be a positive force in our community. It's not just a place for self-improvement, it's a community. And with the new facility, Enzo will be able to serve an even wider range of individuals, from the very young to the very wise. I understand the concerns some residents may have, but with Kayla and Jason as neighbors, these concerns should be erased. The J, the Jensen's are incredibly approachable and will either way to address any issue or worry that may arise. Before Enzo moved into their current location, the property that we are located now was vacant and eyesore. Now it is a vibrant space that uplifts those around it. As our town grows, so does its need for inclusive supportive communities. Enzo is exactly that. If given the opportunity, this facility will provide help to many people who truly need it. Our community is adaptable. I remember when a landlord asked us to not use their parking spaces, respected their wishes, and found a solution. That's the kind of respectful community first Enzo promotes. Enzo has been here for 11 years, serving quietly but powerfully. If you approve this move, Enzo will be able to reach and positively impact more lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Good evening. I'm Tom Warbleau. I'm, I live at 816 South Elm Street. Want to express thanks to the council and the mayor for allowing us to present our case to you. I was the author of the petition that went around to the neighborhood that Mr. Jensen says was misleading and not true, which is incorrect. There was a plat filed originally when this land was dedicated. I have a copy of it, and I would like to hand out to you a copy of the petition and that plat and where those people live.
Thank you. Here, I got two. Do you need one?
The first page on the thing you're looking at is actually where we, as neighbors, we were concerned about what was being planned for these lots. These lots have been overpriced for a long time, which is the reason why they've never been built on. For a resident lot, typically in the past, spend a cost of 20,000 to 30,000. These were offered for 50,000 and the prices were pretty hard-priced not to, to buy and then build a home upon. So that's part of the reason these lots haven't sold. We don't have a problem with the Jensen's, and we don't have a problem with their business. There's been a lot of testimony in their favor, which is, is wonderful for them. And it's a good testimony to their personality. We don't doubt that at all. What we have problems with is the fact that they are proposing to rezone this property from a single-family residential to a business. they are proposing to rezone this property from a single-family residential to a business. And that business, as they said tonight, has over 200 members. They start at 5:30 in the morning. We, some of us like to sleep a little later than that. We start hearing doors slamming at that hour in the day. It's going to affect our ability to enjoy our homes. First page on here, after our neighbors and I canvassed the area, show the people where they live and object to this rezoning. There are 54 households that are shown on that map. Not all the ones that signed the petition are on this map. We didn't include any that were farther out. There was one household that's on Oak Street that was in favor of the rezoning. So it was 54 to one in favor of keeping the land as it currently is zoned. For the names and addresses of those folks, they are on the following several pages. We went through a lot of work, explained what it was. I had people that were very upset about this idea. One family has seven children. They live less than a block away. And they are concerned about safety for the kids with this much traffic coming in and out of there. I agree that a lot of those people come and go on Philip, but a lot of them won't, and they'll go down Elm Street and head north, East Street or wherever, and that's where those kids live currently. So I'm going to read this part. None of the proponents for this rezoning live on Elm Street. They live, the ones that testified at the planning commission meeting, five of those lived outside the city limits of North Platte. What we're talking about is people who already have homes are who are renting or have a home that their father, mother, sister, brother are letting them live in. They're still taxpayers. They're still voters in the city of North Platte. They're residents of the city of North Platte. They're not outside people who don't live in the area. So Jensen's themselves live on Tanner Court. They don't live in our area. So we're not sure how those in favor of this rezoning are not in the area. They probably would like one of these permitted uses, like cremation facility, helicopter landing pad, a restaurant, or conference facility. Those are all permitted uses for this zoning of H1 across the street from their own homes. If you would like, just think about that, whether you as a councilperson or your family would like to live across the street from one of those uses. And Jensen's are wonderful folks, but they may not be there forever. They may move, or they may expand because their business gets better. They may have to move because of family, or it could be lots of reasons, and they may not be there anymore. So that the permitted uses under that zoning would allow those kinds of uses to be employed on that property if, in fact, that happened. Okay, we live there. We pay taxes and vote and reside there. We anticipated that the land would continue to be residential. There's a reason for that. And you can see that as you go through, after those signature pages, you'll see a copy of the plat that was recorded when this land was dedicated to the city. In the second page, I went ahead and blew up this signature line just above Charlie and Tilly Kuchera's signature, and it says, "Structures on all lots will be limited to the dwelling structure and the related automobile garage." When we bought our property over there, we anticipated that those lots would continue to be residential, as did our neighbor across the street or down the street, who built his home and lived in it for 40 years, anticipating that those covenants would be honored. And when the land was furthermore, if you go past the map that follows that, when Barbara Peaks Dunn received that land inheritance from her parents' estate, she agreed to continue with those easements. She says in that deed of distribution, "Subject to easements, reservations, covenants, and restrictions of record," which I've already mentioned to you were in the original plat. So going back to what could be used, that's the permitted uses. And you can see those on the last page of the packet you have. It shows all the different things that could be in there if they ever moved. And that's, they're not conditional uses, they're permitted uses, which means there's no need to come back to the planning commission for approval for that. We also...
Mr. Warbleau, you're at about eight minutes. Would you wrap up your thoughts?
I'll speed up a little bit. Sorry. I'm pretty close to done. When we were looking at buying our home on our home, in the appraisal we received, it said the following: "Neighborhood description, characteristics, a well-established predominantly single-family residential neighborhood. Highest and best use as if vacant. The current use of the subject property and use of the subject property reflected in this appraisal is that of a residential, single-family use. The use is legally permissible, physically possible, financially feasible, and maximally profitable. This residential, single-family use is the highest and best use of the real estate." That's what our appraisal said. They anticipated that that land would continue to be residential, not commercial. Our neighborhood consists of houses not around the block, but on each side of the street we live on. We know our neighbors on the sides and across the street. And I have a photo I'd like to give you of an example of what it looks like, the street next door. This happens to be comparison of our street against Maple Street. This picture is this morning. You see the difference, traffic patterns.
We can share.
You can see the difference in the number of vehicles and the contrast in the and the occupation of the street and the area. You can see that if you think about a kid riding a bike down that street versus our street, Elm Street on the bottom, Maple on the top, you can see the difference between an H1 area and a residential area like we currently have. So I do recall the concern that there was of converting the St. Paul Church to a party meeting house. I hope that you vote similarly to that in consideration of the fact that this is a dramatic change to what the current use of the property is anticipated to be. We, as the city of North Platte residents, taxpayers, and voters, hope that the city council, which we rely upon to represent us, and appeal to you not to make this our nightmare on Elm Street come true. Thank you.
Really want to make a joke about that. Anyone else have a comment? Go ahead and come up to the microphone. Tell us who you are. Oh, I'm sorry. You can be next, okay?
My name is Bruce Peterson. I live at 806 South Elm. Now, I think there's some misrepresentation here. The lots involved is 801, 803, 805, and 807. Not straight through 801 to 807. Across from every one of these lots is a home. Now, they say they got 240 people. Is there the amount of people they have? Now, if you double that to 280 and divide that by six, that's 80 people a day that would be using this facility if everybody just went twice a week. Now, 80 people a day, how much traffic is that going to put out? Now, another thing we're forgetting about here is we got the Jehovah Witness Church. They have 50 cars every Thursday night between 5:00 and 5:30 and 6:00. All that is going to be added on to all the traffic on Elm Street. Now, there's going to be a lot more traffic than people think. You ain't going to be able to go down Elm Street and get on Phillips and go. Half them cars are going to go up the street. They're going to go up to East Street and go that way. Now, remember, there's no 700 block here. We got the 800 block, the 600 block, and the 500 block. So all these people that live past the north lot that they're talking about should have a say on the traffic that goes up their street. And that's what the petition was about, for them to voice their opinion about what's going on. Now, I live at 806 South Elm. Imagine you live at 806 South Elm. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Go ahead. Then I saw somebody else raise their hand. Was that you? You're next, okay?
Letitia Lovett, 1501 West A Street, here in town. I'm trying to jump around here. We respect, I'm speaking in favor of this rezoning and wanting to join the conversation, speaking in favor of that. I believe that it can, what is being proposed can add real value to this community physically, economically, and socially. We respect the... What do I want to say? The petition and the community members and what was set in place before. But just a reminder that in our research, we found that that was waived. I just also want to remind that, yes, we have 240 members, but those are not all at one time. The... You may agree with the mission of what we have going on here in the gym, and I think that a lot of people can. And the question is obviously, why build it here? Why don't build it somewhere else? And for five-plus or more years now, Jason and Kayla have considered a lot of options and explored this, and it hasn't been without great care and consideration that this specific location was chosen and also with a lot of community support. It's accessible. It's visible. It's central. It's perfectly positioned to serve the surrounding area. If, and I feel that most of all, the precedence has already been set in this area. The precedence has already been established by the other existing commercial buildings that are there, which are very aesthetic to the area. You've got West Central. You've got the Jehovah's Witness building there, Great Plains Eye Institute, Maple Park Dental, not to mention the hospital district that it is in. These businesses, as well as many at the hospital, nearby rehabilitation centers, physical therapy clinics, who we collaborate with, we've seen a lot of support from. So again, I feel like that that sort of sets precedence for this area. The land would be best utilized and most useful continuing on the theme of these commercial buildings. Where the concerns about maintaining these lots as residential are very, very understandable, it's also very clear, based on these concerns and the amount of time the lots have set empty and the price that was on them, that it's not likely that new residents are going to move in and build their homes here. So continuing on with that theme of the area seems like the best use of that land. As already stated, the facility will create jobs, so it'll be helpful to the local economy. We'll have front desk staff, personal trainers, maintenance, all of which will be local hires. Safety is our utmost priority here. Jason and Kayla have two girls, so we're always mindful. We have kids' classes. We're always mindful about safety and kids. I understand the traffic, but through careful planning and design, we can plan safe exits and entrance to the building. As we said, we limit operating hours to respect the neighborhood's rhythm, designing the facility so that it blends in with the residential as well as the abundant already commercial buildings in that area, and ensuring appropriate soundproofing and landscaping. But I just want to reiterate, number one will be safety for sure. And just continuing on in that area, the precedence that the other commercial buildings had already set, it's not, and again, not likely that residents will want to build there. That has become kind of clear.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Jean Gilpin. I have the property at 810 South Elm, and I also have the property at 702 South Maple. My folks lived in Ainsworth and were residents there for over 50 years. My dad was retired from the telephone company, and my mom was retired nurse for 45 years. And they wanted to move to North Platte to relocate back in 2004, 2005. And I had let them know after they looked at houses, looked at property, they couldn't find anything that they really felt that was suitable for them. I let them know that I had four properties, the 801 through 807, behind me, and they are for sale. So they went ahead and called Kuchero. And at that time, she was asking, I think it was between 30,000 to 35,000 per lot. Well, my dad called me and said, Jeannie, that's just too high. We can't afford that. And Byron Barksdale, who lives on the corner of Philip and Elm, he goes to Ainsworth once a month to the hospital, and he knew my mom very well. So he had reached out to me to see if my folks would be interested in purchasing 810 South Elm, and that was a lot at that time. So my folks came to North Platte, looked at the lot, and their concern was those four lots across the street, which are zoned R1 now that are up for sale. She was concerned of what was going to go in there, because they didn't want to be next to an office, a restaurant, or whatever. So they came down and met with the zoning at that time, and they were reassured. They were zoned as R1, and they were going to remain R1. It would never change from R1. So they proceeded to buy the lot at 810, built their house, moved here in 2007. Then in 2012, a hearing doctor wanted to buy those lots and rezone it to an H1 back in 2012. So the residents got together, came to the planning commission meeting. Planning commission approved it, and then they went to the city council, voiced their concerns to the city council, and the city council listened, and they denied it. So they stayed as an R1. So here we are, 2025, back up here. North Platte's a growing community. We have the sustainable beef. We have the remodel of the mall with additional apartments above there. You have the multimillion-dollar physical therapy department by Great Plains Health. You have the remodel and the renovation and the expansion to the rec center. And we have Amazon coming in, the warehouse, and we have a housing shortage. So we're going to turn four residential lots that are zoned R1 in an already established residential area to one H1 lot to create traffic, to create the start of traffic. The first class is at 5:30, so that means people are going to start coming at 5:15. Okay, that is going to be an interruption to the neighborhood. Okay, that's, that is gonna be an interruption to the neighborhood. And they, they're, they sound like their, their athletic department is growing up to two hundred and forty, forty memberships now. So, who's to say next year, they ain't gonna double that, and it could be four eighty? And they outgrow this, uh, facility that they have built. So, what does that leave that open to as an H one development to come in? I personally don't want to live next to a, across the street from a helicopter pad. I mean, it opens it up for, for anything to come in there under H one. And I just, I'm voicing my concerns, and that's, that's where I'm going. And then, if they do come in there and I want to resell my house, that's not gonna be a very attractive reselling point. And what's that gonna do to the resale value of my home? So, I, I thank you for your time. I hope you've listened to my concerns, and I really strongly consider, I hope you guys consider your vote very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Other comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Hold on, hold on a second. Going once, going twice. Mr. Garrett?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Garrett, second by Rieker to close the public hearing. Calling the question on closing of public hearing. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider action on application by C and T Cuchera LLC owner and Jason and Kayla Jensen purchaser for an amendment to the City of North Platte future land use map amending land from residential low density, single family to a public quasi-public on property located at eight oh one through eight oh seven, L, excuse me, South Elm Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the City of North Platte, comprehensive plan two thousand eleven future land use map amending certain land from residential low density, single family, public quasi-public on property located at eight oh one to eight oh seven South Elm Street. Clarifying, that's eight oh one, eight oh three, eight oh five, and eight oh seven South Elm Street.
Second.
Flanders. Second, motion by Lucas, second by Flanders. Discussion. As you're aware, we have the owners here, so, or the potential owners. Brad?
So, Bill, maybe you can help me out here, uh, clear up what happened with the plat, because looking at this, it looks like it's, the plat says it's not allowed. What changed? What's, what's going on there?
Well, uh, I guess my position is a, a plat containing a restriction like this is more of an issue for a private party to enforce, that it's not necessarily the city's purview to enforce that type of restriction. The city by statute, um, has to approve the plat, and the city also has the authority to create zoning regulations and to change those zoning regulations. So, uh, legally, I'm not aware of anything that prevents the city from changing the zoning, although the plat might have a restrictive, or restriction, like the one that appears in this. So, and I'm just seeing this, um, plat right now, too, so I,
Gotcha.
I hadn't seen it before tonight, but, um, so I, I guess my position from the city is that, uh, although the city's involved in approving the plat, the city isn't necessarily the one responsible for enforcing any restrictions within the plat.
So, we could choose to ignore our own plat?
Well, I'm not saying choose to ignore. No, I'm saying it doesn't necessarily fall on the city to enforce any restrictions within the plat.
And so, to your knowledge, this, this plat still is viable. It says structures on all lots will be limited to the dwelling structure and the related automobile garage, and I agree, you've got five minutes to think about this.
Right, well, and if you think about it from the city's perspective, the purpose of a plat is to, to lay out the lots and to dedicate the public streets. And so, the city's looking at a plat from a much different perspective, uh, so far as city planning goes, uh, as opposed to any restrictions that would be contained in there for the, for the lots themselves. So, um, you know, if, if a private property owner that is creating a subdivision wants to put these kinds of restrictions within their plats, you know, I wasn't around in the late seventies, early eighties when they did this, but, you know, my position at the time, if I were city attorney, would have been that, you know, why, we don't get in the middle of what a private property owner wants to place as a restriction on their property that they're subdividing. We want to make sure as a city that the streets are laid out according to our regulations, that the lots are the sizes that are required under city code. Uh, so those are the types of things that the city's looking at, and Judy looks at a lot more plats than I do, but those are the types of things that we would look at as a city. We're not gonna get in, involved in policing what kind of restrictions that a private, private owner is gonna want to put into any, any kind of a subdivision that they're creating, uh, like what was going on here with this Cuchera's second centennial edition.
So, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to pull out your crystal ball a little bit. Why would you put a plat like this on a, I, I'm trying to understand what, how that ended up on this property, on these properties?
Well, I'd, I'd just be speculating, but I would guess that that was because the property owners at the time envisioned it as a residential development.
Gotcha. So, that was their will at the time? Okay, thank you.
That's my best guess.
That's fair.
So, Bill, along those same questions, in that regard, who, who actually does enforce it?
Well, I, I haven't been able to look into that. Again, I think it falls to the property owners. It's private parties that would have the ability to enforce that. I don't know who those private parties are. You know, that's outside my purview as the city attorney, so I'm really not gonna comment on that.
Would it be better if you had some time to look into this instead of hitting you cold with it?
Potentially, but again, I'm not gonna comment on it as the city attorney. That's, that's up to private individuals.
Another question that I have, when I look at the permitted uses, I have a question, uh, for the Jensen's, I guess. You said you're gonna have daycare. Is daycare gonna be strictly and only for your customers?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, so, I, I don't read codes very well. I look, I look at them kind of restrictive, I guess. It talks about a daycare here, but I, I read this to mean a, a daycare that's an independent daycare, that's a public daycare that takes care of anybody's kids. And I'm, I guess my real question is, I don't, I don't understand which category this facility fits under. And I want to make one comment, too. I, I was on the council, and you folks asked us to help you with your living arrangements in your existing facility downtown. And, and I admire you for what you've done. You've obviously been very successful, or you wouldn't be inquiring about building a, a bigger facility. And any of my comments have nothing to do with you personally. It has everything to do with the location of the property that you're wanting to purchase and how it may impact the people that live there. And so, uh, it, it doesn't sound like you live there. So, this is gonna be a whole different arrangement than when you were downtown. Because when you were downtown, well, maybe you're still down, when you're apparently not still downtown, according to the address. Tanner Drive or, or somewhere over in there. So, this is gonna be a whole different arrangement for, for you guys. You're not gonna be bothered with any of the traffic that might come your way, because it's gonna be a long ways from your house. But the people that live there, they're gonna be bothered by it. And, uh, I generally get up at six o'clock in the morning. I kind of like that last hour of sleep, if you want to know the truth. And some people would say I probably need the rest, but, uh, nonetheless, uh, I think that would be kind of an impingement on the neighborhood. And, and the other thing that I see here, I think you said you've got two hundred and forty customers, is that right? And, and I presume some of those are families, and probably, I don't know if you count each individual as a customer, you probably do. So, but having said that, and even if they come three days a week, uh, and, and I don't, not very good at math either, but it seems to me like you're gonna have a lot of cars coming in and out of this facility every day. At, at different hours of the day, obviously. But, um, I, I think about where I live and, and when I bought my property, I, I knew what I was buying when I bought my property. Uh, my house, my ho- my home, not my house, my home, is right across the street from a trailer park. I knew when I bought my property, that's what I was gonna be living next to, as long as I lived there. I accepted that, and it's my home. These people bought property and built houses in some cases and bought houses in other cases, with the understanding that there may be other children over there that their kids could play with, or in the case of grandparents, maybe they could be surrogate grandparents for the kids that would grow up there, too. But this is gonna change that whole thing. And, and I know you don't have any intent of trying to harm any of the people over there. I, I think you're good people. Uh, you've got a lot of people that are vouch, vouching for you. But I, I, I just, as a guy that's a very, very strong proponent of personal property rights, I, I think it's wrong to harm somebody else's property rights by putting something into a neighborhood that was never envisioned to be there. The people that bought these properties brought the properties based on the idea that it is residential, will be residential into the future. And I, I just don't think it's right to change that. I, I just have a problem with that. So, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
If I could answer the first question, so, um, we would fall under H one zoning, um, permitted uses as a recreational and daycare facility, and we did confirm that with Judy. So, we're not saying we're a daycare. We're saying we're under the recreation and daycare facility as an H one in the H one zoning.
I, I guess I'm not following you. Which, which one of these one to twenty-one categories?
Number fifteen.
Number seventeen?
Recre- fifteen?
Fifteen.
Recreational and daycare.
Barbershop, but.
The one and the five.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, okay, all right. That's where I was saying that, in my mind, daycare facilities means a standalone daycare facility, that, that is a daycare facility, but.
Well, I think that we would be falling under the recreational part.
I think our understanding is they're lumped together, right? So, we're under recreational, not the daycare. We happen to have child services, but we're not a daycare.
Okay, okay, well, what my, my thoughts still, I think, are my thoughts about changing the value of it, not, not so much the value, it, just the, the domestic relationship with the people around the, the area. And, uh, you know, I've got neighbors that have children, little kids in some cases. And, uh, up until the new pavement of Ninth Street, thank you, Mr. Mayor, my street, Emery, was the only way to get back up on Rodeo Road. And I, I think some of the people thought it was a racetrack. And unfortunately, cops didn't happen to be there when they were speeding by, and I've seen cars go by there thirty-five and forty-five miles an hour. I'm not saying that's gonna happen at your place. I don't mean to imply that. But anytime you increase traffic in a residential neighborhood, you're bound to have trouble, and that concerns me.
I agree. Um, the, the children in the neighborhood, obviously a concern of ours, but are there not zonings in North Platte where there are business and homes in the same zones? Like, Mr. Warblo's business is surrounded by homes. I mean, if we were, if we were creating a facility that was gonna be harmful that, for children in the neighborhood, I wouldn't even stand here in front of you, but I also want to point out that, could they not put a trailer, trailer parks on those and an R one? Are they allowed to do that, or no?
Actually, no.
And then, you know, you say we're doing harm, but I think that we're just successful because we adapt and we, um, are willing to be flexible and change and try to meet our community's needs.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, while the Jensen's are up there, I've got a question on the, this plat issue. So, I'm trying to understand this. I guess I would just share from my history and work in real estate, lending around here. It, it used to be more common to put things on plats, and then the world kind of evolved more to like covenant-type filings, that that's what I've seen over time. So, this was a little more prevalent in that area, but the, what, where the, where the rubber hits the road on that is it, nobody's going to build or finance a facility of this nature without a title insurance policy. And no, no title insurance company is generally gonna write what I'm assuming will be a fairly large title insurance policy for the value of this facility unless they feel that that title's clear. And, and a seller has to generally deliver a clear title in most transactions to somebody, and so I guess my question for you guys is, what, what has occurred that, I mean, do you know this can be title insured? Was that waived off? I'm scratching my head to where if this was all residential wise, the Jehovah Witness Church there. I know now a church can be involved in a residential zoning, but if this had a residential restriction, then why are they there? And so, I guess my question for you is, is, has, have you clarified that this can be title insured for your type of facility? And what information do you have on the waiver of the, of the plat, the plat restriction and/or with the Jehovah Witness, um, church?
Yeah, so, we just have one copy, uh, waiving those covenants, so I don't know.
So, the covenants put on there were waived by Mr. Cussera himself in nineteen eighty-nine.
And are you guys, is this, is this the key element in being title insurable? Okay, so it is, as far as you know, it is title insurable for your type of, that's. We just share with the council from my experience financing commercial facilities that the process is that title insurance company is gonna go research the deed, and they're gonna issue a title insurance commitment, and if there was an exception that they wouldn't insure over that says you can't do a commercial property, then it would be very uncommon for somebody like this to purchase that property for that reason, then it'd be very difficult for them to finance a commercial structure, because if, if somebody was worried about a potential litigation or enforcement action that had had a valid argument, why would you invest that kind of money in a property, and why would an insurance company insure that? So, so, to me, where the rubber really hits the road on this whole plat issue is whether somebody will title insure the transaction or not.
Okay, Brad?
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Kayla, while you guys are up here, um, quick commentary, then, question. Since I watched this on Planet Commission, I've dreaded this coming forward. It's, it's, it's a very difficult, um, decision to make. You guys are great. Folks on Elm Street are great, so, just so you know, this is kind of tearing me apart a little bit, but my question to you is, what phase are you in, in the purchase of this? Do you have any contingencies on the purchase of this? Okay.
Yeah, so, um, the purchase of the property is contingent on financing and that we get it rezoned to H one.
Okay, that's, that's very comforting. That was a great move to do that, uh, not knowing how this is gonna turn out. For the past couple of years, this council has tried to, um, increase our residential lots, and a lot of times, we're doing it with a planned urban development. And I have a point to this. So, for example, up on Lakeview, uh, we have a planned urban development with some commercial lots. Down South Buffalo, eventually someday, uh, we get residential with, you know, we have a Quick Stop going there. But the one, and you struck me really close with, um, centrally located. The one that comes to mind is out on East Philip, where we have a new development with a lot of multifamily housing, uh, single-family dwellings and commercial lots going there. I'm just throwing that out, because when I was thinking about this, especially all day today, I'm like, and I know you guys have struggled to find places, but, but that, that one kind of popped into my head. My main concern with this, and Mr. Warblo sent that picture, I'm not saying, because I know how you guys are, and I'm not saying that Elm Street's gonna be, gonna be busy, but it is bringing it into an H one, and that's the first thing we're considering right now. We're considering residential to H one. The reason, Judy and I talked about this a lot today, and you know, maybe revamping H one, but you know, you have to have these things in here, and everyone's pointed out the helicopter landing pad. There's a reason.
There's a reason a helicopter landing pad is in an H1 zone, you know? To save lives and other things. Everything in here kind of makes sense to me what's in an H1. Not knowing unintended consequences are something I always think of and never know. You know, you guys might outgrow this area in, in five to 10 years. And then you look to sell it to the next best use. So th- these are things that just go through my head, which is how I don't know I'm going to make the decision, but I will. Um, and one last thing on that is I almost feel like we're bailing the seller out of a situation because they're overpricing these lots. And I feel bad for you and I feel bad, but the seller's trying to, trying to get some money because they know H1, they are, they're close to the hospital. They, they want a payday. So that's all I have.
Brad?
While you have the Jensen's up here, um, I do a lot of rucking right by your, your current facility. Um, and you guys early in the morning do a lot of outdoor training, weather permitting, obviously. I'm, well, I'm not out there rucking when it's cold either, so. Um, is that still the plan in this more residential area? Where do you guys probably will be?
Yeah, so um, some of our adult programs will go outside and do two hundred and four hundred meter runs like down the street and back, but you know, our class capacity is twenty to twenty-five and they're split programming. So only half of those clients are going to be doing the cardio program, which is outside. So maybe ten or twelve footsteps going down the street and back.
Right, thank you.
I agree with a lot of, I, I agree with both sides. I, I know what it's like to find a building to expand your business and, and unfortunately, it's like banging your head against a brick wall. It's just, you know, it, it's, it's, commercial property in this town is, is tough at times. And we, I, I commend you guys for your business and, and looking to expand and that, that, you know, obviously you guys have great success. Otherwise you guys wouldn't be looking to expand. The, the thing that I'm looking at is this, this map here of the parking lot. I'm sort of a realist and I know that a lot of people in North Platte drive big SUVs and big trucks and I would say, you know, right now there's, it looks like there's sixty-two parking spaces here. I would say that would be cut down into half to around thirty. And so I just don't see this, i- is, is thirty going to be suitable for this?
Can I answer? Um, so Jason put that really nice site plan together, but we have since hired Lee Davies.
Okay.
Um, and we shrunk the building size down from ten thousand to six to seven.
So the building size moved down too?
Yeah.
Okay.
For budget purposes, so that we could afford the land.
Okay. Um, what are you guys looking to do outside for lighting? I know a lot of commercial businesses have outdoor lighting on their building. What is that going to look like for your guys?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that will be a work in progress with Lee, just knowing that, you know, the surrounding area, we're going to try to limit, you know, the, the light pollution um, into neighboring properties. Um, but it is definitely on the things that we have talked to him about, knowing that, that could be an issue.
Yeah. Um, do you guys think this is a make or break for your business or are you just going to keep?
I think the unintended consequence of us not finding a building soon is going to be pretty imperative to our business. We've been trying for five years.
And as I'm sure a lot of you guys are aware, um, if, or maybe you're not, uh, the facility that we have now has zero parking. And we've had issue, not issues, but um, we didn't, like, we, we have people parking down the street in front of other people's homes.
Around the block, two blocks away.
Yeah. Um, and so, I mean, we are taking up street parking in front of other people's homes where we are currently because we don't have a parking lot.
I, I, thank you. I appreciate that. I do, like I said, I have concerns for the residents in the area because they did move in there and knowing what they moved into and now we go and change it, that changes their whole, their whole plan of, of their living arrangements, I guess. So, um, yeah, this is, this is not an easy one either.
Yeah, I mean, they are already next to an H1. You know, like one lot is.
It, it is a mixed area over there. Um, I will agree with that. But the, going to the H1, that could leave it open for the future like Pete had mentioned too.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, sorry, Brian, go ahead.
So the, the, the plan that you have for our next, the next one, is that set? I mean, is that, the, the doors are going to be facing to the west or is it going to change?
That was, I mean, simply my understanding of zoning and talks with Judy and Dave. Um, because at the time we had not hired an architect and they asked for a plan. Um, so that, what is on there is my understanding of zoning and space requirements as far as.
Could be fit parking requirement.
Parking and green space and whatever. So, um, that is definitely obviously not my expertise. And so that is why we have an architect to kind of help us through that process.
Well, I, I feel like I need to explain my vote. I'm, I'm all for the business. Everybody I talked to had nothing but nice things to say about you guys and your business. But it all boils down to the residents in the neighborhood. And uh, and looking at the map, some of them don't, their houses don't face them buildings on, on Maple Street. Their back doors do. But the people on South Elm are pretty much going to be looking out their front door to your big building sitting over there. And I'm putting myself in their position that if I sit in that front room, I really wouldn't want to see a big warehouse thing there. And my second concern is, is if you outgrow it and move, all the things that H1 allows that building to be turned into really, as a neighbor would really concern me. So I have nothing against your business, nothing to get you, heck, this fat boy probably should be going to your gym as far as that goes, but uh, I just think it's the wrong, the wrong place and I feel for the neighbors in the neighborhood.
Um, respectfully, it's not going to look like a warehouse. And if we can grow our family in the back of a gym and I have two healthy girls and I slept good and they slept good and we were inside of the gym, I don't think they're going to be as disrupted as they're making it sound.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments?
Okay. Yeah, I just want to share with the council what I'm, I'm thinking on this one too. I actually think I voted in favor of this in the planning commission two thousand and twelve, but I didn't go back and look it up. And, and this land sat here ever since that time. I mean, to me, if, if you step back and I, I absolutely understand the concerns of the neighborhood. Now, a lot of it's their view and their personal perspective. Frankly, if this was, this facility was across the street from my house, I wouldn't mind, but I'm also adjacent to Linden Court and they're a fantastic neighbor. And so it's, it's all, it's all a matter of people's opinion and how they see things. But I certainly respect all those who signed the petition. But to me, this decision was really made when this area, the rest of it was moved to H1 in my mind and then the, and then the church permit was granted. You have a piece of land here that frankly, I think just needs squared off. I thought it should have been done in twenty twelve and there would have been a facility, I think it was a, a audiologist office or whatnot that would have been there on the tax rolls ever since then. And in my opinion, would have had very minimal impact on the neighborhood. I think when we get in these tough ones, this is a tough one, that, you know, you, you listen to the impact of some concerned neighbors, which is often some and not all. And I think our job is to look, to step back and look a little bit at land use and planning for the, for the community as a whole. So I may be in the minority on this, but I, I think this is a logical move to H1. And frankly, if it, if it would pass, I, I think the neighbors are fortunate to have somebody who will probably be a great neighbor and a great citizen versus other uses that could be done on the facility. A- as for your comments, Pete, I hear what you're saying, but this, this property, I mean, it's basically part of our health campus in my view and it's empty. And if I owned this property, if I wasn't forced to liquidate it for some reason, I wouldn't sell it for residential prices. I, because it's a, I think it's a natural, natural commercial fit, no different than all the other properties are. If you go over onto William and you go uh, over to Maple and, and all that, I just think it's part of that campus. So I probably just have a little different view on this.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Jensen's. You may sit down. Brian?
You know, I, like everybody was saying, this is a hard one to, to swallow. Um, but it, but I want to say thank you for everybody that spoke tonight. Spoke at the planning commission. Um, you know, if, if, if you have the concerns or if you're for it. Um, but first the concerns that, that were heard. Uh, especially the traffic, the noise, preserving the quiet nature of the area of that neighborhood, I think. Um, they're all valid points and boy, that, that just sits with me. And, but I, but I think I, I had to look at the full picture of the area. Um, it's quasi-public. It has other stuff going on, uh, on Maple. Um, this is, this wouldn't be a large facility coming in. It's not a franchise. Um, it's a, it's two individuals that are community-bound. Um, I don't believe that they would uh, create a nuisance over there. Um, the parking lot that they, that they have planned, I think would take care of the parking issue. I know Maple does have a parking issue, but I think the, um, the parking over there is very minimal. And I, I'm guessing they'd probably take care of that. But um, but this is locally owned. They started from the ground up. Um, so I do support the change uh, because of, um, I believe they can, we can accommodate both the need for this wellness facility as well as residential. And I, I'm confident that the gym can be done to sup, to, I guess, uh, keep that character of that neighborhood. Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
Just one quick question for Judy. Judy, the church to the south of this property.
Yes.
That's in blue. I can't read blue on this map. I should have looked. What is that zone, guys?
Um, so that map that you're looking at is the comprehensive plan. So that's the amendment. That's not the zoning.
Right, but we don't have a map in here.
The zoning is residential.
The zoning of the church is residential.
That is correct.
That's what I need. Thank you.
I got one question for Judy.
Hold on, Judy.
Uh, this business that they're going to propose to put here, would it, does it have to be in a H1 or could it have been in some other type zoning?
Can be in an industrial. It could be in a commercial. There's a lot of different options for a recreational facility.
Okay.
Just not a residential.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Last time, calling the question on item number eleven. Item number eleven fails. Which makes item number twelve largely moot. But city attorney has a position of logic on this, so.
I do. So, um, item, item number eleven was to, was to consider amending the land use uh, for the property. So the um, Nebraska statutes still allow for uh, the zoning to be changed without amending the land use plan. It does require a higher percentage of the city council to vote in favor of that, especially considering the petition that was filed by the property owners. So, uh, so my, my um, position is that the council still needs to consider item number twelve, even though the land use map did not pass. Um, so we still need to consider item number twelve to consider the application for zone.
So you're, just to sum up your logic, because there is an application and because there is a, a petition, we need to give this legal consideration or to conclude it correctly.
Correct, right. Nebraska law still allows for the council to rezone property without amending the land use plan, but it, it, there are certain other requirements, so um,
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. We'll go with your opinion.
Well, and yeah, my opinion is since there was a protest that was filed, it simply requires a a three-fourths vote of all the members of the city council in favor of the zoning. So we would have to see a three-fourths vote in favor of the zoning change for that to pass.
And that's of all the members of the city council, which would require six votes of the, of the seven people that are present.
Correct.
In the positive.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, due to having to follow the agenda as well, we'll have to open a public hearing to consider action to adopt ordinance number four two one two to rezone certain lands from an R1 dwelling district to an H1 hospital district on property located at eight oh one through eight oh seven South Elm Street. Lay in the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty-two twelve. An ordinance of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Rezoning certain lands described as lots one through four. Chair of the second centennial addition to North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. From an R1 dwelling district to an H1 hospital district. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Mr. Mayor, I move to waive. Sorry.
Hold off though. Okay, public hearing is now open. Same subject as last time essentially. Given the last vote. If anyone would like to make a comment, feel free to do so. Public hearing is now open.
I move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Garrick, second by Bowles, calling the question on closing a public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider action and adopt ordinance number forty-two twelve to rezone certain lands from an R1 dwelling district to an H1 hospital district on property located eight oh one through eight oh seven South Elm Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move to waive the three required readings on ordinance number forty-two twelve. And I move to adopt ordinance number forty-two twelve to resume, rezone certain land from an R1 dwelling district to an H1 hospital district located eight oh one dash eight oh seven South Elm Street.
Second.
Motion by Reeker, second by Garrick. Any further discussion on this item? Calling the question on item number twelve. Item number twelve fails. Item number thirteen, approve the claims.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Reeker, second by Di. Approving the claims. Calling the question and approving the claims. Claims are paid.
No.
Oh, we have a number fourteen.
I was, I was, keep going.
Keep going.
I was trying to find it. I was like, wait.
Okay, I thought it was thirteen, so I'm, okay. Uh, number fourteen, approve the agreement for sale of real estate with sustainable beef for the electric department and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
I move to approve the agreement for sale of real estate with sustainable beef for the electric department and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Reeker. Have any discussion on item number fourteen? Nick?
Was this a previous um, agenda item that was polled back in March?
Yes.
Hmm, I think so, yes.
Was the sale price twenty-two hundred and now it's seventy-five hundred?
There was debate with the seller, um, and the misunderstanding under which piece of property it was. So we were looking at an unimproved versus an improved piece of property. That's the price difference.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to figure out how it, okay.
Other questions? Calling the question, item number fourteen. Item number fourteen is approved. Public agenda request. We respect our city employees. Request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired to public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Anyone has a public agenda request item, please approach the microphone.
Uh, I want to compliment the council. I've built, I was able to visit with all of you that were here and also with the mayor. And you all heard us, uh, even the two guys that voted against us. No harm done. Uh, I'm glad I'm not mad, but uh, I appreciate you taking the time and, and hearing us out. Uh, because I honestly wasn't sure that would happen, but it did. And I compliment the council and the mayor for being willing to do that and answer your phone, uh, even if you had to call back because we called at a bad time. So I appreciate that. And thank you for your vote tonight. I think you made the right decision. I know it's a hard one. We all discussed the fact that it was. Wish the best to the Jensen's. I, I wish we could find something for them to build on because I think they're a wonderful family and uh, wouldn't say anything bad about them. I just got upset about a few of their comments, but I wanted, I want to uh, thank you for, for hearing us out. I appreciate it.
Thank you. This is agenda request. So do you have an agenda request? Okay, you're welcome to talk to any of the council members when we're done. Sorry, it's what the way it is in the agenda, so we kind of have to stick to it, so. Sorry, it's what the way it is in the agenda, so we kind of have to stick to it, so. Mr. Reeker?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Reeker, second by McNue to adjourn, calling the question on adjournment. Better.